Did her template? She told them to make you a copy. And then our team did make one.
Okay.
We have to do one.
What?
We have to do one. That's a copy of hers.
All right, we're good.
Make the people we hired.
Maybe that part we get to.
Good.
Thank you. I'd like to call this meeting to order. The mission of the Freehold Township School District is to honor and support every learner every day on the journey to become curious and engaged members of a diverse global community. A notice listing the time, date, and place of this meeting was posted on the public bulletin board of all Freehold Township schools, on the entrance door to the administrative offices of the Board of Education, on the district website, at the office of the Freehold Township Clerk, published in the Asbury Park Press on January 11th, 2025, and sent to the Star Ledger on January 8th, 2025. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a roll call, Mr. DeVita?
Mrs. Brand?
Present.
Dr. Casey?
Here.
Ms. Crosby?
Here.
Mr. Gargula?
Here.
Mrs. Lambert?
Here.
Mrs. Speeler?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mrs. O'Sullivan?
Here.
Mr. Amoroso?
Here.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a motion for the approval of the August 12 regular meeting minutes?
Oh, move.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstained.
Abstained.
Two abstained.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, President's remarks, I will be brief. Again, we're getting very close to the opening of school, and I want to thank administration once again for all the hard work with all the last-minute staffing and getting the buildings ready. You know, a little update with the Laura Donovan, in an abundance of caution, when we were looking, there's, you know, we're very obsessed with making sure the buildings are perfectly clean, and using high-resolution light now, we've been looking through the bookshelves, and if we find anything residual, we're going to have it manually cleaned at this point, to the point where we're going to outsource that and just make 100% sure that the buildings are totally ready. So other than that, I didn't see any facility issues that had hung us up, which I think is a good thing, and on behalf of the Board, we just want to wish everybody a big opening and a pleasant opening to schools, and congratulations again on a summer full of work, not only in curriculum, hiring, facilities, been a busy, busy summer, and we do thank you for all of that. So with that, I will move to the administrative report.
As Mr. Amoroso shared, we are closely approaching our opening to school and ready to welcome our staff and our students back. Our facilities are in good shape. Today's communication was the purposes of transparency. It is not a major issue that was discovered, but in, as I explained in the communication to staff and parents, in the inspection that company, the insurance company had hired to come out and inspect all of Laura Donovan, when shining a high-resolution LED light in a couple of spots on a bookshelf and books, in the media center, they found some small dots that are white and appeared to be mold. We are able to wipe them. If we walked by and wiped it with our finger, it would come off, but because we're very cautious when we're putting our students and staff in environments, we are choosing to be very proactive and have that cleaned by, deep cleaned by professionals, and again, out of an abundance of caution, and to ease the minds of our staff and families, having that space air sample, air testing, sampling done twice, pre-cleaning, post-cleaning. Mr. DeVita did look back, that space after the remediation and students before students return at Donovan, tested very low at 100, so it appears to be inactive, and the air results will confirm that. Back-to-school nights, if the Board members can either access the document to populate which you would attend or not attend, or simply email Cindy, that's fine too, letting us know which back-to-school nights you will attend. The principals, we do give them a heads-up, they always check just before, because they do like to introduce the Board members in attendance. If there's any changes to your attendance, just email me, and I make sure that I let them know, because they like to be very prepared and don't like to leave anybody out. Our back-to-school nights are a mad dash in September, it's every night outside of Board meetings and the regional back-to-school night, and the holidays in September is a back-to-school night. Years ago, the Board had asked that we don't duplicate, and we do our best not to do that, so there's, every school has its own evening. All of them are at 6:30, and the dates are on our website and also in that Google document. We'll move into our presentation of access schools.
Yes, please don't bonk anybody in the head. All right. Tonight is my first in a exciting series of presentations around the state-mandated student assessments in New Jersey, so you will see, as the next Board meetings approach, I will be adding to our agenda and doing presentations about the other state assessments, but tonight we're going to focus on the access for ELL testing. And then ultimately, this slide deck, once I've populated with all of the student data, will be posted on the district website for public access. Again, tonight we're focusing on the access for ELL assessment. This is the assessment given to all of our ESL students. In grades K through 8, it measures student language proficiency in four domains, listening, speaking, reading, and writing, and students gain proficiency in those four domains in that order. Students become more proficient as English listeners first, then as English speakers, then as English readers, and then as English writers. And all of our students, as I said, who are identified as multilingual learners, take this assessment. It's not like NJSLA where they don't start till third grade. So the state mandates which kind of data that we need to report. When I'm reporting on achievement data around NJSLA, I report in the content area specifics, but they also mandate that I have to report our student data around specific subgroups. So we're going to look at our students' performance on this access test, both as a whole group of ESL students, but then also look at race, gender, and program data. I am going to remind you, and this happens every year, because we have a small number of multilingual learners in the district, I am prohibited from reporting some data based on the size of the group, so if there are groups of students in particular grade levels that are less than 10 students, you'll see that on those data charts. Oh, thank you, I forgot to tell you, I also made hard copies for you, because I know that every time I do these presentations, you're all squinting at the screen trying to see the data, so I will be, moving forward, always giving you hard copies of this as well. Again, just a reminder, our access for ELL test is based on the WIDA national standards. These are the standards developed by WIDA, and they, we also have a WIDA model assessment that we use in district to identify students who are needing these standards and who can exit our ESL program perhaps prior to the administration of the test. So, and that does happen every year. Again, this is just sort of a visual about the progression of how students are assessed on this, on this particular test, and this assessment, or this progression is, applies in every one of the areas measured. So for listening, speaking, reading, and writing, students are given an assessment score across this continuum. As a reminder, students need to score a 4.5 on this assessment to be determined no longer needing services. So you will notice, when I put data up, that we have very few students in the Level 5 and Level 6. That's because they're no longer being served in our ESL programs, so I know that question comes up every year. How come, unlike NJSLA, we don't have kids at these higher performance levels? Because we're no longer testing them, because they are being assessed outside of ESL. They're not needing the services any longer. So this data chart represents all of our students, grades K through 8, identified as ESL students, and the grade levels that they are in, both at the elementary level and the middle school level, and you can see down here at the bottom, this is the total number of students across all grades, K through 8. This chart also, and the other charts, also give us data across three years of performance, so we have three, we can look at three years of performance post-COVID for students.
Question, maybe I should know this, but is ELL interchangeable with ESL?
Yes, so ESL is the name of the program. ELL students are English language learners.
So we're still using ESL?
Also, that's a term that the state uses. We, our program is defined as an ESL program. We typically refer to these students either as multilingual learners or English language learners, so we're naming both the students, but the program is an ESL program. Thank you. You will notice on this data chart that there are some grade levels where we have a less than 10, that means that we're not reporting out the data, because it's a, the population of students in that particular grade level is less than 10. So some highlights or things to note, last year, we tested 46 students in total in, across all grade levels, K to 8, which is a decrease in students from the previous year, it's 10 fewer students, so you can see the number of students. And you may recall this time last year, when I reported, we had a markedly sizable increase in ESL students from 23 to 24. So we're, you know, sort of riding this ESL wave, this is not atypical for us, to have influxes or outgoing students in large numbers. We typically are around that 40 number. Last, this past year, that those 46 students, 15% of them scored at the Level 1, 35% of them scored at Level 2, 35% of them scored at Level 3, fewer number at Level 4, remember 4.5, they get proficient, and that's why you see very few students in Level 5 and Level 6, right? Because we exit them from the program, they no longer are required to take this assessment. Something important to note, as we're looking at data across multiple years, you can see in 2024, we had 36% of our students scoring in that lowest level of proficiency, that entering level, and when we track those students into the 25 school year, those students have moved up to Level 2. So we are moving kids along that progression, which I think is really important, right? That's the, that's the goal of a program, to see students continue to move across the continuum until they reach those Level 5 and Level 6, where they, we are no longer assessing them. Let's take a little bit into the demographic groups, and then I'll share some summary data. So again, this is our, this is the same data, but just broken down by race. One thing to note is that the largest number of our students in the, receiving ESL services fall in the, in the race of Hispanic. The state of New Jersey identifies Hispanic as a race, as well as an ethnicity, depending on the report, but how this data is reported, it is considered race. I know, in some places, race and ethnicity are two separate things, for this purpose and for data, for the state's data, they require that we include it with race. So the largest volume of our students are Hispanic, which means the largest portion of our non-English speakers are, Spanish is their native language. When we break that down by gender, you can see that we have more male students than female students, but again, it's, you know, not statistically significant, they are, you know, within 10 percentage points of each other in terms of numbers of males and females taking the assessment. And then this looks at program. This is how we identify students in terms of services that, or supports that they may receive. So you will notice in, in elementary school, middle school, and then across all of our grades, a large portion of our students, more than 70%, and that's been consistent across three years, are students who do qualify for free and reduced lunch. So remember, when I do the NJSLA data reporting, somebody had asked in the past, could kids be counted in multiple programs? Could they be both special education and free and reduced lunch, and/or receive 504 services, or any number of those things? And the answer to that is yes. So again, for the NJSLA data, I am often telling you, remember that our, some of our free and reduced lunch kids are also our students that receive ESL services, and you can see that reflected in this report, right? A large, you know, nearly three-quarters of our students who receive ESL services are not speaking English at home and are learning English for the first time, you know, in schools, and speaking Spanish at home. Questions about any of that demographic data, and then I have some summary highlights to share. I do want to share, since Mrs. Rosen is here with us this evening, some appreciation for her and the ESL staff, who really have done an extraordinary job in moving our kids forward, and the success that I am sharing with you tonight really is due to the work that they are doing in the classrooms, with students, and with families at the school level. 16 students, 16 of those students that I just shared out with you, representing almost 35% of our total ESL population, exited our ESL services during the 24-25 school year, as we use the WIDA model to measure. 50% of those kids only spent one year in our ESL program. Those are, that's, yeah, that's some pretty impressive data. Those are students who entered our ESL program in the early grades, right? So these are kids, when we, when we can provide ESL services to them, the younger they are, the faster they are acquiring language. We did notice that students demonstrated market growth, not just on their access assessment, but also on our district-level measures. So iReady, our district-level assessments, several of the district resources that we are using to assess and support student learning, students have access to now in their, in their native language. So the iReady assessment, we can give to kids who are native Spanish speakers in Spanish, which allows us to accurately measure their math and their reading needs based on their native language, so that's been really helpful for us as well. And we started this several years ago, and it has been tremendously successful, we've used some of our Title I funds to support multilingual family engagement events. So the Family Literacy Night occurred last year, during the Donovan School Literacy Night, and an End of Your Family Engagement Night, that was a tremendous success, focusing on students, a celebration of student learning. Kids brought things that they had learned and developed or put together projects to show the language that they had acquired during the school year. Each grade level did a different project. It was this absolutely phenomenal display of student learning. Parents were so excited to be there and really celebrate in their kids' learning over the course of last year, it was wonderful. So what are some new and exciting next steps in the world of access for ELL? We will be continuing ongoing professional development and training for ESL teachers. We have, you know, we have teachers in the department that are new in recent years, and so it is always a goal of ours to continue to support teachers and making sure that they have the most up-to-date tools and are equipped with best practices for supporting those kiddos. And with Mrs. Rosen's promotion to West Freehold, I have a new supervisor that I am working with and supporting with our ESL students, and so Mrs. Hoppe is already dug in, she and Mrs. Rosen and I met earlier this month, to talk about transitioning programs, to really support Mrs. Hoppe in being successful and making sure that she's continuing the efforts that Mrs. Rosen has did with the team to make sure that our program continues to support and move kids forward. We will continue to be using digital tools to support homeschool communications. This past year, we acquired Smore across the district, and Smore is a tool that all of the schools are using to publish newsletters, and teachers at Donovan School are using it to do their classroom newsletters. Parents can access information in Smore in up to 40 languages, so all they do is click on the newsletter, drop down the arrow at the top, and they can select their native language, so parents can stay connected to what's happening in their child's classroom in their native language. I shared with you how iReady is now available for students in Spanish. We are continuing to use Pocket Talks, they've been tremendous in supporting communication between teachers and students, but also kids communicating with one another. Pocket Talks, we noticed an awful lot last year, kids using them in social circumstances to build their communication, which is wonderful. We're also going to be adding a new tool this year, a pen that can translate text, so we're going to be trying that out with, we've, the tech department has already vetted the tool, so we're going to be acquiring some of these translation pens and giving them a try to see if they can help students with translation of academic documents. Additionally, this summer, we provided four weeks of high-dose tutoring for our, our multilingual students through remaining HITS grant funds. We, as I shared in a previous Board meeting, we did receive that additional $100,000 allocation from the state and our state funds for continued high-impact tutoring, and we will be identifying some ML students to continue high-impact tutoring, because we have noticed that it's been pretty impactful for these kiddos. And there's a specific curriculum that is specifically designed for students acquiring English that we've been using, that's been very successful. Questions?
Are you going to have another family engagement night planned?
Yes, most certainly, it was tremendously successful. Last year, our goal was to have more than one, so I think that, I mean, at the very least, we will have another one of what we did this year, which is that family, that celebration of learning night, which was tremendously successful.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much, that was a great presentation, and congratulations, Mrs. Rosen, on that data, that's fantastic, we love to hear that as a board. Send the word back, we're very proud as a board to see data like that. Good job, team. All right. Do we have any other administrations?
I simply certification. I Robert DeVita, School Business Administrator/Board Secretary, certified that as of June 30th, 2025, and July 31st, 2025, bill line item has been over expended in violation of NJAC 6823A-16.10C3, and that sufficient funds are available to meet the district's financial obligations for the remainder of the year, and that's all I have.
Excellent, thank you. This is the first opportunity for public participation on agenda items only. Before I read this, is there anyone that's going to approach the podium?
Did he need to do July also, because that's on the agenda?
He did.
He said July 2nd?
Okay, sorry, I missed that, it's only written June.
Take attention.
Seeing none, I'm going to go right to Personnel, Policy, and Communications. Mrs. Speeler is actually by phone today. I don't know if one of the other committee members would like to do it. Good evening, we did not meet as a committee tonight, so I'm just going to move Agenda Items. Item number two, First Reading of Policies or Regulations. I don't have to read down the list, right? Just as listed. Item number three, Second Reading of Policy is listed. Item four, First Reading to Abolish Policy as listed, as listed. Number five, Resignation is listed. Item number six, New Employment as listed. Item number seven, Resign Resignation as listed. Number eight, Adjust Resignation Date as listed. Number nine, Establish Start Date as listed. Number 10, Adjust Start Date as listed. Number 11, Leave of Absence as listed. Number 12, Salary Adjustment, Adjustments as listed. Item number 13, Change of Assignment Salary Adjustment as listed. Number 14, Change of Assignment as listed. Number 15, Temporary Change of Assignment/Salary Adjustment as listed. Number 16, Transportation Salaries as listed. Number 17, Lunchroom Assistant Salaries 2025-2026 as listed. Number 18, Additional Compensation Transfer Assignment/Room as listed. Number 19, District Mentors as listed. Number 20, Translator/ Interpreter as listed. Number 21, Substitute Rates 2025-2026 School Year as listed. Number 22, Long-Term Substitute Teacher Pay Rate of Pay 2025-2026 School Year as listed. Number 23, Student/Teacher Practicum Observation Placement as listed. Number 24, Name Correction as listed. Number 25, Certified Substitutes as listed. Number 26, Non-Certified Substitutes as listed. That is all I have. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions, policy? Seeing none, can I get a roll call?
Mrs. Brand?
Yes.
Dr. Casey?
Yes.
Ms. Crosby?
Yes.
Mr. Gargula?
Yes.
Mrs. Lambert?
Yes.
Mrs. Speeler?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Amoroso?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Curriculum, Mrs. Brand?
Yes, good evening, we did not meet as a curriculum committee, however, we met later on to discuss the Board goals, which I can discuss later when we get to public participation. And as, and I'll just go through the course. Course, number two, Course Reimbursement as listed. Number three, 2005, 2006, 2025, 2026 Professional Development Plan and Mentoring Plan as listed. Number four, 2025, 2026 Instructional Materials List as listed. Number five, 2025, 2026 Field Trip List as listed. Number six, 2025, 2026 Curricula as listed, and that's all.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Do you have any questions for curriculum? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Finance, Facilities, and Transportation, Mrs. Lambert?
I'm waiting for this matter.
The Finance, Facilities, and Transportation Committee met this evening. In attendance were myself, Mr. DeVita, Mr. Amoroso, Ms. Gargula, Ms. Williams, and that's it, did I say goodbye? We discussed multiple items, I can go into little detail, great detail, I'll keep it short and sweet, and if anybody has additional questions, feel free to reach out to me, I've got two pages in notes. We talked about the bond refunding process, we have some bonds that were issued in 2016 that are callable this fall, and the state requires that when the net present value of the savings is 3% or more, you have to refund them, and they will be going through that process. The issue is 13.7 million. Part of the savings will go to pay the professionals involved, which would be Willens and Phoenix.
Phoenix.
And Phoenix. And you'll see it on, the first reading is going to be on tonight's agenda, the savings that will pay for Phoenix and Willens, and the formal hearing for the public will be on September 30th, and we, Willens will provide us guidance for that, in case anybody has further questions about the savings, what makes them callable, feel free to reach out. We discussed the transfer for the IBNR for health claims. IBNR is incurred but not reported healthcare claims. But keep Um, Bob keeps, um, a certain reserve available for that. He had $120,000 available, but we had, um, $287,000 of more claims come in. As you know, we're self-insured, but we have a stop loss. When someone's out of the stop loss, the liability is 100% on the district, so there's a bit of a guestimating as well as transferring, a lot that, um, goes on with that. Um, so, and there's a lag, so there's really no way to tell, you know, how long that comes in. It's typically within 15 to 45 days, but sometimes it can take longer than that. So that's what that transfer was, um, in, on the 812 agenda. You might see some more transfers. If you have any questions about the stop loss, IBNR claims, feel free to reach out to Bob or myself. Um, third item we discussed was the electrical upgrade at DDES. Uh, there's going to be two change orders coming on future agendas, and they relate to this. Uh, anyone who's familiar with those, with Eisenhower knows that in the back of the building and separate from the building, on that concrete pad is the big electrical box. As part of the electrical upgrade, we were going to abandon that box, break up the asphalt, remove those wires, and bring all the electrical in-house. But what had happened in a previous year when the seventh grade wing was built, there was another arm of electrical that came out of that box, and that box is known as the switchgear, so there was another arm that came out. So now it's cost prohibitive to break up the whole entire access road for the two arms. So instead, we're going to replace that switchgear. So there's, there were some, there's one minor change order for $4,200 for changes that were made probably in, you know, how we, uh, inspected or in the ass builds, and the second one will cost $60,000, but we will get a credit back for the work that we're not doing in breaking up the asphalt. So what the net of that is, is yet to be seen. Um, but if anybody has a question regarding, feel free to reach out. Environmental insurance update, first on site was the company hired by, uh, Gallagher, who's our insurance broker, to go out and inspect Laura Donovan School so that we could possibly get our insurance reinstated by Beasley. If you all recall, after the mold situation last year, they dropped our insurance. So that was what Neil was talking about, the company that came out with the LED, the high-level LED lights, that was first on site. So they have looked at every aspect of the building. At some point, they'll prepare a report to send to Beasley, and we'll find out in the future if they're going to reinstate our insurance or not. Based upon that outcome, we'll see what happens next. Um, we spoke about the referendum update last week. On the 14th and 15th, central office admin and some building level admin met with Spezel to go over, uh, the construction projects related to the referendum. Um, Bob said it was an absolutely fruitful meeting. Um, they really made some progress, some great decisions were made. It was very helpful to have the admin there. Uh, Diane, who's, uh, Dr. Brethardt was head of security, who also had very intimate knowledge of DDES, our superintendent, Mr. Dickstein, who knows other buildings inside out, upside down, they were able to make some, um, input as to certain doors, what types of doors, windows, locations of windows, all for the safety of the staff and students. Um, the four schools with, um, UVs and wood ceilings will have a rooftop dehumidification system also added and built in. The RFP for commissioning, um, HVAC and controls will go out. Uh, TCI Environmental is taking core samples of all the materials that are going to be demoed, uh, to see if we need to add any specific steps to the process, i.e., if they found asbestos, that would be a certain process, tending or whatever they do when they remove anything, that can be considered an environmental hazard. Um, Bob started work on the referendum safety committee. We spoke about that, um, maybe bringing in TCI and Allen from WAC, which was the group that worked on the Laura Donovan mold situation last year. Um, and starting first as a group meeting and then maybe breaking out into smaller building level safety committee meetings. We'll see how that goes. But in the initial, it'll be a large group made up of central office, our maintenance staff, uh, some administrative people, board personnel, uh, we'll keep you posted on that. And then we discussed the board goal template on this referendum process and what that's going to look like, and the ultimate goal of how to get consistent and substantive information disseminated to the public every step of the way in the construction process when that all begins, as well as agenda items. Okay. Anything you want to add? Okay.
No, and I think what we discussed, um, you know, we invite the two FDA presidents to give, provide input
Yes.
ahead of time. That's why we had mentioned, might be a good idea to have your environmental consultant, if, if, and talk to mine
Correct.
if ours is willing to. I haven't spoken to him yet, and this way they can share information, what he's already done.
Mm-hmm.
All right?
And that we will be taking air samples before, during, and after the construction processes.
Yes.
During any demolition.
Yeah, air samples throughout the whole demolition. And in terms of disseminating the, the information to the public, every day, uh, Bob will receive sort of like a, a bullet hit list, you know, this was switched, this was changed, like of what got done. How do we convert that into something substantive and brief to go out to the public that's meaningful to the public? So we have to kind of figure that out. That's a work in progress. Um, with that said, I'd like to move the following items on the agenda. Um, item number three, uh, Secretary Treasurer's report. Item number four, bills and claims in the amount of $10,122,587 and 67 cents approved by?
Mrs. Brand.
Renata Brand. Item five, travel and related expenses as listed. Six, disposals as listed. Item seven, the nursing services, uh, contract for the 25, 26 school year as listed. Um, that seems to be an update. Um, item eight, out-of-district transportation contracts through MOESC as listed. Item nine, the resolution authorizing the introduction of the refunding bond ordinance. That's what we discussed in the committee. Item 10, revised change order for interior renovations at Katina Elementary School. Item 11, fiscal year 2026 ESEA grant application. Item 12, IDEA basic and preschool fiscal year 2026 grant. And that is it.
Thank you, Mrs. Lambert, for that comprehensive.
We talk a lot in our meetings.
You made Bob speechless. That's not, that's hard to do.
Good job.
Sorry, Bob. Okay, do we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, and do we have any questions for finance or facilities? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Say the aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, all right. Motion carries.
Excellent. We will move into old business. Do we have any old business? I have just one, um, which is a reminder for, I know the committees are diligently working on their goals. Eleanor just handed me a template that they're working on. I know Michelle's working on ours, and I'm sure curriculum is working on there. So, uh, we don't have to do an update tonight, but just a reminder to keep an eye on that. Um, the other thing, of course, we've already mentioned, is to make sure you're signing up for back-to-school nights. Um, the list is
Hospital and everybody all together.
Okay, try to carve up some time. That's another goal, hidden goal, is we want to try to get high attendance. And I think that's about it, my reminders of old business. Does anybody else have any old business?
Mike, I'd like to go over the, uh, board goals with the curriculum. We met, we met tonight, and we went over some of the board goals, and the objective we've, we decided was to increase community attendance at Board of Education meetings.
Okay.
And we listed four major activities in, that we plan on executing in, in the coming, um, months. Uh, publishing Board of Education meeting dates on school matters, coordination among board members to attend school-based events, which we discussed, and board members to attend school-based PTO meetings as, uh, directed, and invite school-sponsored activities and clubs to present at board meetings before the actual, uh, presentation for awards, and just have an introduction to what their activities are. And all this with the, uh, in goal of increasing attendance to the board meetings and questions and interaction with board members.
Thank you. Eleanor, do you want to share yours?
It's, we all worked out.
That's all.
Oh, it's comprehensive?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I see.
Okay. I haven't read that yet, but thank you for that.
We're waiting for our chairperson to get back.
Okay.
Italy, I think, right, Carmella?
I am back, but yes, we, we need to, um,
I think she got back today.
Yeah.
Yes. So, but once we, once she's back, we will carve out some time.
Okay. And as Michelle gave in her report, uh, finance is working on that communication part of, uh, as the construction is going on, how can we best present that data to the whole frail township community so people can understand what's going on at each of the construction sites? You know, you know, if the playgrounds, you know, are going to be used or not being used, for example, or if there's a certain building going up, people might have questions about it. We'll try to keep as much up-to-date information as we can, and we'll try to derive the information from the construction management team and somehow get that perhaps on a, a web link, uh, with some photos. So with that, we will go over to, um, new business. Does anybody have any new business?
No.
Okay, if not, um, second president's remarks, um, none other than, um, this board congratulates everyone once again. We look forward to a wonderful opening of school and a great day of no hiccups and, uh, knock on wood. So, uh, once again, I can't believe that summer's almost over. With that, we will go, um, into the second opportunity for public participation. Once again, any hands up if we're going to do that? Uh, doesn't look like it, no. Okay, then we're going to go to an executive session. Um, so whereas pursuant to NJSA 10 colon 4 dash 12B, "The Board of Education may exclude the public from that portion of a public meeting at which the board discusses any of the matters described at NJSA 10 colon 4 dash 12B 1 dash 9. Now therefore, be it resolved that in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act, the Board of Education shall conduct a closed session pursuant to the personnel and legal exceptions prescribed by NJSA 10 colon 4 dash 12 for the purpose of discussing the following matters: A settlement agreement. It is anticipated that the length of time of this executive session will be 30 minutes, and that action will be taken in public after the executive session. Be it further resolved that said discussion may be disclosed to the public when reasons for discussing and acting upon it in closed session no longer exist." Do I have a, um, a second on that?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thanks, folks, for coming out.